Mr. Murray, look just like God.
So I call the June twenty fourth for the selectmen meeting. Where does it stand for the president?
I likely didn't see the mind of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so is there some comment? If anyone wants to talk, you have a couple of minutes. You guys are part of our meeting.
The person I'd love to speak to tonight is not here, however, I will admit that to the rest of the board. Just to remind you guys that you are public officials. I am a public person, I live for the public, I deal with the public all the time. Even if you don't like what somebody's saying, you have to listen to them. What Chip did at the town meeting, as you can see on Facebook and all the comments, didn't look good for the town. That's all. I'll address Chip. Certainly, I guess when he shows up, is he going for a month, week two?
Um, I think he was just gone for the rest of the week here to call out for work.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Are we gonna be able to talk?
Nope, this is a business meeting for us to talk about, um, with the fire department and the school to go over the budget. Uh, the board of selectmen meeting are business meetings, so the only time you can talk is right now, you have a couple of minutes to talk. Um, the other times you would be able to talk is at the town meeting when we're, um, currently working on the scheduling of that. But this is a business meeting for us to work on the budget.
Alright, so the comments today, looked at your last budget and there's some pretty healthy pay raises right down through the whole budget. And sadly, we couldn't help find company with their weekend coverage. And it said some of those pay raises could certainly go to help.
We worked on the budget and we're gonna discuss that, you're very welcome to stay and listen if you want me. So any more comment? Alright, um, for the minutes, do we have those or not? I'll just get back to that. Um, no additions to the agenda, no court commencement announcement. No public works support, no traffic authority. Do you have any finance report or is why this is the budget? Uh, we don't, I don't have any update, so we'll just put in the new business, which is the budget. So. You want me to make that copy? Um, you got it up there? With the screenshot? Oh, that's the proposed budget. We, um, everything that's in yellow is, um, change. Whether it's up or down, it's mostly down. Um, the selectman and finance director, there's no increases. Um, a thousand from the conference of dues. We put back in the weekend K, so that increased the FICA and Medicare and that increased, um, the four fifty seven B for putting, um, those employees in, so those areas are an increase. Um, we had a smaller increase for the tax collector. And smaller increase for the town clerk. Um, we took some, that's actually not a change. Uh, we've smaller increase for the treasurer and we took some, um, small amounts out of the treasurer. Public Works went down for the part of the public works that was for the, um, road management. And then for public safety, we did keep, um, the public safety reimbursement fund, that's the stipends, right? Yeah, so we kept that at forty from, from thirty-two thousand, which is in, that we're doing now, we put that up to forty. You think that's good?
Work, we're gonna make it work.
Okay. Um, and then we did the increase on the day staff, we kept that as planned, so for competitive wages. And we put that back in.
Can I explain how the day staff works? Folks know what's going on.
Go ahead.
Right, the issue that we have is Volantown is a bedroom community, as we all know. And there's nobody in town in the daytime, absolutely no. So, uh, what the day staff does is they come up from six-thirty in the morning till four-thirty at night. Uh, the fight folks that we hire are all called perdiems. Perdiems means they're all part-time, they don't get benefits or anything along those lines. Well, what we do is we hire folks that work in full-time fire department and ambulance services. And in the, in a career fire department, in a career ambulance service, they, a lot of them work a twenty-four hour shift. And then they have three days off, some of them work three-ten's and then they have the days off according to that. So by hiring these perdiems on their day off, that's their second part-time, uh, their sec, that's their part-time job. So by hiring these folks, we're getting folks that are already trained, meet all the qualifications, meet all the physical standards. They have their EMS, they can operate in the back of an ambulance, they can drive an ambulance, they can do all the paperwork that's required, which is killing the service. And then from there, they can, from jumping in an ambulance to our largest piece of apparatus. They're qualified to drive it, they're qualified to pump it, they can work a fire. In the daytime, when there is no supervision, because we're all at work, they can make the calls to start if it's a working fire or, or a severe car accident, they can make, they can get on a radio and make the decisions that need to be made and get the proper resources started. So, that's huge for us. Now, the weekend coverage, where that's coming into play is, um, and I'll let Chief LePage talk a little more about it after. What's going on is right now, volunteerism is dead. We have like a whole missing generation. Most of our folks are in their fifties and they're still packing up and going into a burning building, the last couple of fires we had. I mean, he, he was, the chief was, had to have the hand line because he was the youngest guy there. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a young man's game. So, what's going on is there's about six people that are keeping the twenty-four hundred people, is that how many people we got in Volantown?
Yeah, twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred people, we got about six people keeping it alive. The problem that you have, we're having, it's not our problem, it's the town's problem, is that on a Saturday, you wanna get up in the morning, you wanna go to the dump, you wanna go for breakfast, you wanna do this. People seem to, most of our ambulance calls start about four o'clock in the morning because people can't sleep all night because they're not feeling well if something's up. A majority of our calls are then, and our guys are getting burnt out. Uh, the night of the meeting that we had over at the school, we had two ambulance calls that night. And we didn't make either one of them because the people that are keeping it alive are going, can't do it, gotta get up in the morning, gotta go to work. People who work in multiple jobs and they're going, you know, um, on Saturdays and Sundays, you go and you get in the back of an ambulance, by the time you get to the call, you get them to the hospital, you do a turnover, you have to do your paperwork, you gotta clean the ambulance. And these people are not all freshly out of the shower that we take to the hospital. Sometimes it's pretty gross. You're two, you were an EMT for a while, you're talking two and a half hours to three hours out of your day. And about six months ago, they came to the body at the meeting and, and they were putting their hands up and going, can't do it anymore. And we have, we, we, if you join and you, we, you wanna be on the EMS side of our business, we'll send you to EMT school, which costs us
Uh, fifteen hundred bucks just to send somebody to school.
And it takes about six months of their time. And then most of the people, they get there and next thing you know, they're working for Musup Ambulance, they're working for Putnam, they're working in Preston. And they don't have any time for us and we paid for it. And it happens time and time again. So at the end of the day, why we, why we need to do this is, if we don't get out, Brizzle Ambulance has started, that's, that's paid ambulance service, American Ambulance. They're taking care of Jewett City, Brizzle, they cover Lisbon as well. American Ambulance puts that ambulance there, but if a call comes in and it's right down two towns over, they're sending that ambulance there because they don't make any money unless the wheels are turning on that ambulance. So there's a very good chance, if we're calling American, it's coming out of Norwich. That is way too long for somebody to be laying on the floor, cardiac arrest, difficulty breathing, uh, all the stuff that we take care of, allergic reactions. So it's vitally important that we have the seven day a week daytime coverage. And again, it's not for me, then I come into my house, cut my grass and I go over to his house to power wash. They're, they're there to protect the twenty-five hundred people in this town. So, it's very important that, that we have that. And again, that's a decision you've opened up with me.
Nate, you have a quick question, the, uh, somebody the other night said at some point, it's gonna start affecting our insurance rates. The property owners in town, if the fire service isn't properly staffed, are we getting near that point?
Well, Volantown's always been unfairly treated by the ISO ratings. Because we have a structured fire, probably, maybe if you have a couple of, we have three or four fires in, in a year. A nice size, I don't wanna call it a nice size, but a fire. And then we probably have a working structure fire, probably once a year, somebody loses a house or we have a fire of that magnitude. So they figure because we have a large distance, you know, the city of Norwich, what is it, two miles by two miles, where they pay departments and then they have five volunteer departments. We only have one in Volantown, we don't have hydrants. But they're burning once a month or every other week, and then you see an excavator there knocking a house down. In Volantown, I think for a small town, every one of them is getting rebuilt that we put out. But because of all them circumstances, we are at, I think, a nine. And I think that's the highest you can go in the ISO rating, where like Jewett City, they've got, they've got hydrants, I think they're at a three. And you know, Norwich with creative apartment, that would be a one, they call them class A fire department. But I think we get treated unfairly because of that, because I think if you look at the dollar amount of damage they have in, I'll use Norwich for an example, versus Little Volantown, we're dropping the bucket to the insurance carriers. But yet we get punished the hot, the worst, and I think that's very unfair. So that, it doesn't really help. I get, I get called all the time from insurance carriers, how many fire trucks you got, how much water you got on them, how far is, uh, three fifty Beach Pond Road to the firehouse, they wanna know all that stuff. And again, we're up here and there's nothing we can do about it because if it, ISO, insurance services organization, that's the rating they give small towns. So in other words, we pay more and the guys that burn the most pay less.
Can I add, Jody a question?
Sure.
Is there any, is there any way of lobbying or, or finding a way to get that changed?
Fire departments in the area have been, they've been fighting the insurance carriers, they got a lot more money than we got, better lawyers. It's not, it's not right, we, we
Oh, I agree.
We, we tried, I mean, when we went out years ago, we went out and we got large diameter hose so we could, you know, we could, uh, supply water to the, some of the larger fires. I mean, we have a tanker truck, and the way I look at it, the, the big truck that we have has twenty-three hundred gallons of water. Our first do fire truck has a thousand gallons. The way I look at it, once you go through that thousand gallons, you better bring in an excavator. But unfortunately, that's the way it goes.
Yeah, I think we've made every change to make it possible easier for ISO, we've done all kinds of things. A lot of money.
Thank you.
So, um, is that budget made yours? It makes like, immediate?
Well, just looking at it really quick, I just wanna make sure we haven't compared to last year's, what was it, total?
Uh, what are you looking at the?
Looking at the yellow, the one ninety-two fifty-four, is that what you said you've got?
That is what we, um, last year it was one twenty-eight, two forty-four, so we put the, um, the fifty, approximate fifty grand back in for the weekend staff. And so that includes that and the increase for the day staff currently, so it's a more competitive rate.
Yeah. I think somebody asked about the weekend staff, why only six-thirty to four-thirty? I think it's just to take a little pressure off the minimal volunteers we have now, I mean, it just gives them a little bit of a break.
Yeah.
You know, but we go around the clock, of course, I think it just gives some of those guys that are doing it a little time a little bit of a break.
Looking at that?
It probably
Around the clock?
Um, maybe down the road.
It's coming, it's coming.
That's why we're working on the safety, the safety committee, public safety committee to look into, like down the road, what we're gonna do because it's, it's probably gonna come to that and we're just need to prepare for that.
Unfortunately, it's gonna come to a lot.
Yeah.
But where it helps out, if we have a call in the middle of the night and again, you've been on these calls, you come back to the firehouse, the ambulance has gotta get, stretch has gotta come out, everything's gotta get washed and cleaned, if it's a car accident, all the tools have gotta get put back, they gotta make sure they're in working order, they gotta make sure they're clean. And it seems like goes from six people down to two people, they go back to the firehouse. And, uh, people are just, you know, they're going, hey, I, I had to go to work in four, I'm going, I still had, so did I. I mean, we have a stipend program just to try to keep the interest in the training. I mean, because without some of this training, if OSHA ever stops in and pays us a visit or somebody gets hurt, there's an investigation almost automatic, you know, so we're trying to cover the bases that. And you know, our, our training schedule is, I think is light compared to what you're supposed to be doing, but everybody's doing the best they can, but we're burning these people out.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, this works.
Okay.
Ask members to come out and support the budget.
What's that?
Ask members to come out and support the budget.
We're gonna, um,
It's not the members to make this, I mean, this is a town problem.
Yeah.
You know, back in the old days, you know, that's how they were things, everybody come in with your Volantown fire bomber jacket on, but those things are over. It's time for the people, we, we need to do a better job educating the people on what we're doing. Hopefully, the people say, hey, I, I mean, two guys that direct traffic in town, and everybody here sees them. One guy is ninety-one years old. Ray Goodella, who passed away, he was out there until almost ninety. The other gentleman that runs the fire police.
Wasn't ninety, he's up there.
We need some people, and then, and all we need is somebody to direct traffic. And we've had a couple of people step up and they're going, screw this, you know, the rain and the snow, you can't see any action, you know? And luckily, you know.
And both of them, yeah.
Both of them are there, and of course in Volantown, when we have a wreck on one thirty-eight, one sixty-five, traffic is back to four miles. So, you know, he goes home thinking his name is asshole, because people are yelling at him. And, and thank God they're here.
So, yeah, so between all the, we cut, um, we took a little bit from the library, from, um, a little bit, we got, we managed to cut a little bit from my lead department and the total of our cuts was what, like thirty? Thirty something, yeah. So the total was, um, like thirty-three thousand, we thought, and then we added the back fifty-four, so it was almost like a twenty grand increase over the second budget we did, um, I forgot to get another twenty grand out of that. Yeah, we, we could have, so, uh, but we're gonna recommend that the school, if they can cut, um, around enough to make it so that we're back to the even, so it evens out, if they can cut enough to even out what we went up, which is like, what, twenty-five, thirty grand?
So how much did you say you needed?
Twenty. Twenty.
Twenty. Okay, yes. And, uh, that's, that's doable because we went over some things today and we had some changes and I appreciate uh, the, the fact that, uh, I think we can meet that, okay?
Yeah.
And just, just had some, you know, changes in, uh, insurance and a couple of other things just today, which made it reasonable. Um, I wanna say something about the minimum expenditure requirement. Because people look at the overall cost of education and they say, oh, we'll divide that by the number of students. But the state and all the reports do not pay enough attention to the impact of the local property tax. And all of their formulas and all of their, uh, regulations and reports do not accurately assess that. And a good example is some towns would take and pay for the buses out of the town budget. And we pay for that in the school budget. So you know, there's totals that just don't mix. But the most important thing is, and we're projected to receive two million, one hundred ninety thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars from the state next year. And then if you subtract that from the school budget, you come out with a, an expenditure of around fifteen thousand dollars. It's not thirty-four thousand dollars. And the issue here is that we have been reducing staff. And if you look at our budget, the first line is teacher salaries. And if you'll notice, that's sixty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars less than it was this year because we had some retirement, we're not replacing that person. Our special ed teaching staff, the cost of that is down sixty thousand dollars because we had a special ed teacher retire and we didn't replace that person. But we have some expenditures that are very difficult to handle. And one of the biggest hits we had was the school lunch program. And during COVID, the federal government paid for free breakfast and lunch. And we were getting increased grants from the federal government. And that's been taken away from us. So that means that we have to go back to where we were four years ago and have that in the budget. Now, we run the school lunch program, well, traditionally it's been about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we put about thirty thousand dollars in the budget to pay for a cook. You know, I mean, we have to have a cook. And then the rest of the program is paid for by the commodities, by reimbursement for healthy food certification. And of course, we charge the students for lunch and breakfast. So those are the things, but that was a huge increase. Now, I just mentioned the budget's gone up a little bit because things have changed for some of our high school students. And we have to offer a few more services. OT, PT, speech and language, and there's been some changes that we've had to make adjustments for. So we'll come up with a twenty thousand, but I just wanted people to know that, that all of a sudden, and I'll tell you, Norhaw, Norhaw pays about fifty thousand dollars per this student and they get probably three percent of their budget from the state. And if their board of ed came and said, we wanna spend fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand, that town would approve it. And I just left, uh, my former school district, we had a town, no matter what education was requested, that town fully approved it. Of course, it drove the, um, you know, the town that they were regional with crazy because they'd voted down and the other town would approve it and the budget would pass. And there's one other thing. And the state constantly uses this, the per pupil expenditure. And they look up and down Eastern Connecticut and they say, oh, you're spending too much money per student. And they're not using an accurate formula. And their first thing to say is you need to regionalize. And I'll tell you, if we regionalize, you would lose your school site governance. Because we make decisions about our local budget and here we are, we're talking every tax dollar. But if you, if you regionalize, you might be in a situation where Volantown has two votes and the other town has five. And, and how does that protect, you know, your, your local government? Now, I worked in the last regional school, well, the second to last, region eighteen. And I will tell you, the state says, oh, they were doing a high school project, we'll give you eighty percent reimbursement. So they rent, they went into a regional school district. The, the reimbursement right now is about twenty-six percent. So you have to be careful about, you know, incentives. But please, the per pupil expense has to be related to the local property tax. And they have formulas out there and I just can't see where they're making a thing. Final thing, you have to write your state legislators and say thank you because they've kept our reimbursement from the state, the ECS grant at two million, one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars for the last seven years. And Tracy went up there and she testified, she stayed there all day, you testified at midnight. And in the past, I've gone up and testified with this because that's the mainstay. But the formula, I think, and I look at it, it doesn't treat Eastern Connecticut the way that it should. And it's the same thing, Jody, about the pilot program and the reimbursement of the state. So we have to make sure that we're, we're voting for that. Uh, I have to say this, January twenty-ninth, I got a letter from the Department of Education, the US Department of Education. And it said, all of your federal grants are suspended until further notice. And I have a payroll coming up. And you know, it's not a lot of money, it might be six, seven percent of the budget. But, but all of a sudden, that's taken away, where are we gonna get that money? I would have to gut the budget and probably ask for another town allocation, margins are that close. And I just wanna say they rescinded that, but the thing is that they could go back to that and just say, no, we're not going to do that. And I know there's proposals to eliminate the Federal Department of Education. And what will the long-term, you know, energies be with that? Uh, I, I could go on for a few other things, thank you for listening. But please, we do not spend thirty-five thousand dollars per student. And we bring in grants, even with the, the, the meeting we had the other day was very comfortable. And that trim was air-conditioned last summer and that was paid for by federal funds. And you know, in the long term, we've been writing grants, that saves you the local taxpayer money because if we didn't get that, we would at some time have to think about the air quality of the building for the students and other things. So we write grants, we get extra money and that helps eliminate the impact to the local property tax there. Uh, I think I've said my piece, okay, but thank you.
Tracy, I can't grant it, I'm the fourth treasurer and secretary. I just wanted, today I just went over some bits of checks and stuff. We have been getting a grant for our preschool program, that was cut significantly this year. Right, and in the past, we have paid what back to the lunches. For the lunches for all preschoolers to get free lunch, they eat at communal tables. Because some of them really don't know how to eat and do at that age. And, uh, so this year, we are gonna have to pay that out of something else, there's not enough money in that grant to pay other than the preschool teachers this year. And that was fifty-two eighty-eight this last year, what we owe into the, uh, food service program. And we've had Title I cut in different amounts. food service program. And we've had Title I cut in different rounds, the IDEA grant was cut. Uh, IDEA Title I, uh, the preschool one. And there's like something out there, I went, where people are saying, there's been no cuts in our grant, there has been cuts in our grant. There's been a lot of cuts in, in our grants this year. Just so people know that's false, the grants, which is if you don't get the grant, you're paying it out of taxpayer fund. Our legislative program, you are, one minute, you know.
And, and the other thing, you know, to, to the selectmen, thank you so much because you've always been there when we, we've needed help, even Jody with inspecting the building and looking, we have a capital improvement plan. But it's based on his inspections and keeping the building safe for the school. But the amount of time that the selectmen have in supporting, you know, good financial practices in every board of ed meeting, I can't thank the board enough. Because I give them sometimes a hundred and fifty pages of information. And they receive the expenditures of every single penny. And they receive, uh, all the other information that they had. We spent hours developing this budget. And this is my twenty-first budget and I never had to go back to the town except for once. And I called up the selectmen and I said, can I drop off of a dollar fifty-four cents because I went over the budget? And he laughed and he said, I think the town can absorb that, Adam. But I was really ready to make sure that it was balanced. And we have a very small, efficient staff. And I mentioned before, there's people up the state that says, you need to regionalize. But they've never been here to look at what we've done. They've never looked at our day-to-day practices. And they have these things. And when I talk to people about different things that they have in their district, we can match them. And we've done that over the years. So I, I thank you so much for all your time.
Yeah, so from the, but we made our cuts in our addition based on what people said at the town meetings and what people I've talked to have said. I don't know if you guys got anything from the meeting or from anyone about what the reason was for the board of ed to not go through. And so we're just picking order to make it. Um, we still intend on using the money from the undesignated fund to make it a zero increase. But we don't wanna take more money out of the undesignated fund to do that. So that's why we're recommending the, um, around twenty grand for you guys. And do you understand that it's, uh, you have a tight budget and we have a tight budget and, uh, but I don't know where it's expected for you to cut, cause I didn't hear that clear at the.
About one percent increase was okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we got, one percent.
Yeah, so I don't know why you guys got bored anymore.
Yeah, the postal, which we, I mean, I, we would hope that it would pass if their meeting, um. Like, those are, those are kind of difficult reforms because we have such a small subset of voters and, um, I think that we're gonna look to seeing, you know, what, if he, you know, when he said it, there's a thing that happened weekly, you know, to, to spending then. So even in a week, things can possibly change. And if we can afford to do what we, we'll, we'll do that, but, um, take away and regroup for tomorrow's meeting and come up with a, with a plan for presenting.
So our schedule, we were looking at doing, uh, the town, we get your, your numbers. We're gonna do in the town meeting on the eighth, was it July eighth, the town meeting and referendum July fifth. And then moving to a referendum. Cause we're already.
What do you mean referendum?
Uh, that was with the eighteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, July fifteenth, that you said. We're gonna move to referendum, we're already late. Um, we're getting the bills out, we're not, they're clearly not gonna be ready for July first. Um, so we're looking at planning on having them just pushed up a month. So having everything hopefully set for August first to go out and then to redo, um, the last day, I think she said the third. Because there's a holiday in there somewhere, um, for the last day to pay. So that's what we're, we're counting on.
Yeah, there's a cut, right?
Yeah.
The last day, okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're knocking on it, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the schedule we're looking at.
And the one thing we should say is that as of July first, we'll probably be on, you know, done, not, not essential spending.
Yeah.
Only, yeah.
So, um, we talked to the finance of the school and that was like not, no supply ordering, just we're focusing on, uh, payroll and anything that can happen.
I don't do spending freezes, I do essential spending.
Yeah.
And there is a difference in that's important.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that I'm gonna propose then to the board, a twenty thousand dollar cut when they meet tomorrow night. And that will give us an increase of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. And I found a way that there's some numbers in there that we can reasonably take some, uh, reductions. Uh, but it is getting, uh, very, very tight, you know, so thank you.
Yep.
What's your dump? The outside, you're done? I don't wanna interrupt them.
No, go ahead.
So one of the other things that we kinda shaved off, those are, I mean, we fund our own maintenance on our truck.
Yeah.
Um, they're tested every year, everything's done in accordance with that. But if there's any kind of mechanical failure with our truck, it's something we definitely would have to come back to the town.
Yeah.
As, could we shave, you know?
And that being said, we're in the same case with four of our buses, we're getting four new ones, but four of our, our old. And this budget year, I have someone that's sixty-two thousand on bus repairs. You know, uh, so we got four that are things right now, okay, knock on wood, but one won't go down at any point. And our hope is to replace one year going forward from this.
Or to every other, just whatever.
Whatever worked out. But, uh, we definitely could have a catastrophic failure and then we have a real problem.
Do you, don't we lease the buses?
No, we buy our buses. We buy one, a leased version. It sounds like we're leasing them, but we only.
Beginning we lease, and then we buy another.
Yeah, all the time. We bought them out last time over like forty years.
The meeting they had about the buses and I thought it was a good idea about maybe consolidate and maintenance with the town garage.
Yeah, we don't, um, we actually.
Maintain your own vehicles?
We don't maintain our own vehicles, we have a mechanic on staff.
That, that garage is nothing more than a garage, a parked vehicle?
It's a parked vehicle, they, they use it, they have like, um, a welding table, they do, they do minor repairs there, but we don't do mechanical repairs, like they.
Maybe an extension?
Yeah, if the garage was built for them, but we would have to hire, for them, they're not, we don't have a mechanic on staff, so we would have to hire a mechanic for that. Like, so the, so the bu, the garage was designed and built to be able to be a mechanic garage for, for buses to fit into. But in order to do that, we would have to hire a mechanic, which would be good.
And how much do you spend on outsourcing your repairs?
Uh, for public work, I'm not sure, for repair, I guess.
And how much do we spend, uh, outsourced, say what, sixty-two thousand?
Because, uh. You know, we've at the end of life, um, and they had a lot of slack here, get more buses.
And our vehicles are on the newer end right now too, so the, the, the mechanics, maybe would sleep on them, the mechanics, they could forget. Well, we have thirty grand for repairs, but we have one snowplow truck that is really old and really, I'll be gonna decide, hopefully it's it's, I don't know if you get ready on that. Um, we're using one of the old fire trucks, new bikes, for I don't know how long that is just.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
It's like the best fine truck, they love it. So there are two or three new snowplow trucks, but everything else is all, so.
I mean, diesels are getting more and more expensive. I know last year, we had a couple failures, it was forty-two thousand dollars for the repair.
Yeah, it is an option.
We usually budget ten thousand, right?
Yeah.
Last year was a bad year for us.
The garage is designed for that, so it is an option if we need to.
Something to look at.
Yep, it is.
Now, you took out the, the fifty thousand for the capital for the ambulance?
Yeah, but, but it's.
But if.
It may be, yeah, we have money set aside from before.
We have money set aside.
And you do, and we'll put money in again. And if anything happens, we'll just have to figure it out. But we are still putting money away, just not this year. And there's money put aside already too.
When I started, I think the amount of calls we had in Volantown was ninety-five that year, it was a busy year. We're almost going up to five hundred calls this year.
And it's crazy, like some days are like insane, where they almost overlap and then one day there's ninety.
Both same time.
Yeah.
It, it, it seems to be the thing.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's not a little volatile anymore, the traffic is.
Where, when do the streetlights show up?
Trying to get one at the end of Econ, but they keep putting it on.
They're on it, the guy ran the stocks, ran that sign on me tonight.
So, um, that's where we are.
Did you go to? You mean the senior?
Yes, we're keeping with senior, not cutting that off.
And that's scheduled to start?
Uh, as soon as the budget passes, we can put that out for the driver and get that started. Um, we have a new, um, senior, um, agent for the elderly and she went out yesterday and met with, um, our older residents that are, that are at home to see if they needed anything for the heat. And, uh, she's all ready to get the van started, uh, the second the budget passes, then we can hire a driver, so. It'll be going.
How did that drivers need all the same things like one of lots?
Um, a driver, it's, it's, um, it does not, it doesn't need a C P L, but there is, um. Yeah, you have to have a passenger endorsement and you have to have a training because it's wheelchair accessible, you have to have a wheelchair training. Uh, which I think.
Date, I think, too.
Might not be that easy to count on.
Yeah. So, I'll say.
Yeah. Webby O C, we're, we're up and running.
Okay.
I kept putting my work password in there, it locked me out.
That is, it is noon, it's a noon hour, isn't it?
It's a new thing, so we're all squinting. I, I reached out to my captain yesterday, they only allowed me to put the firehouse on.
Okay.
Give me options, although I did put library and.
Okay.
Nobody called.
Did you, did anyone go there today?
People Volantown.
We, we were really busy today, so I think a lot of people are coming here to like hang out for a bit, cool down, so.
Style view.
Yeah.
I mean, storm duty and everything, nobody ever comes.
Okay.
Top town.
No more day, right?
Well, my power without it, uh.
Here's a shock. It was transformed when I was going to work, it was on one sixty-five down like Patrick fine.
Yeah.
They had all power trucks were down there, something must've let go.
Yeah.
And that feeds this way, don't it? Or do you get yours out of plain field?
Mine comes out of plain field. But it was just on a road, it's a transfer, we were in front of our house, luckily.
You need us for a seven o'clock meeting or?
Tonight.
You wanna see up for questions, uh?
Uh, we're done. I think we're in last, did you have any questions about anything or any suggestions? It's just me and you. But we're good then. Thank you. Do we have any questions later?
I looked.
Okay, hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.